We're going to open the zoning board of appeals meeting. My name's Howard Tracer, this is Eric Stein, and Sue Neuss. And we have, I don't have a...
Oh, I have one.
You have it?
Okay.
I'm going to read both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, the cottage is at Plum Island LLC, 14 Plum Island Boulevard. The applicant is requesting relief from section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed change of use and associated construction requires a finding to alter or extend nonconforming use from an auto repair school to an accessory use structure and parking for the proposed restaurant at 2 Old Point Road for the property lot located at 8R Old Point Road, Plum Island, accessories map U 02-0153. And then the second joint application is the cottages commercial LLC, 14 Plum Island Boulevard. The applicant is requesting relief from section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed change of use and associated construction requires a finding to alter or extend nonconforming use from a mixed-use auto sales/repair residential to a restaurant use for the property/lot located at 2 Old Point Road, Plum Island, accessories map U 02-0154.
Okay, Mark, you want to come over? Just for everybody's information, there's only two board members here, so we won't be making any decisions tonight. This is only for information only. I'll give you all a chance to ask questions if you choose after the presentation. So, nothing's going to be decided, this will be continued.
And our third member will be coming up to date by reading all the notes in minutes from the meeting, going through the material, you know, assuming the video is available.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. Mark Griffin for the applicant, cottages commercial LLC and also cottages Plum Island LLC, two separate entities, however, the principle of each LLC is Vincent Godin, who's my client. He's here today, and this is Claire. And we're here, as you probably know, because Mr. Godin has a proposal to reuse these two properties, these two lots, and repurpose them as a restaurant with accessory use and parking. For the existing conditions, you have this plan in your packet. Both lots are actually quite large for Plum Island. The 8R is 21,000, a little over 21,000 square feet. It has a significant amount of frontage, it's got 143 linear feet of frontage. The 2 Old Point is also over 21,000 square feet in lot area and also has a significant amount of frontage with 268 and 96, 0.96 linear feet. So, significant amount of frontage and significant amount of lot area for both existing lots. You may well be familiar with these two lots, because when you drive onto Plum Island, you really just can't miss them. It used to be the Maturos property, and actually, I think some of the signs for the service station are still on the building at 2 Old Point Road. And so, 2 Old Point Road contains what used to be the service station. Also, I guess, a used car lot was operated on the premises as well. And it also contains a single-family residential structure. 8R has an existing garage building, which I understand the Maturos family used to run an auto repair clinic or school out of that building, where they would teach or train people how to repair vehicles. And it also has an existing residential dwelling over here. So, both of these uses, the automobile-related uses on 2 Old Point and the auto repair use on 8R are pre-existing nonconforming uses. They predated the Plum Island overlay district from their inception. Some of the structures also have nonconformities, as you can see. The structure on 8R actually goes over the lot line, so that is a setback, but it's pre-existing nonconforming for that setback, as is the residential structure on 2 Old Point Road. It's, you know, encroaching into the setback area on this lot line, but that also is pre-existing legally nonconforming. So, what the proposal is going to be is to remove the auto repair building, service station, and the residential building, and the restaurant will be on 2 Old Point. Parking will be facilitated on 2 Old Point, but also on 8R. And the existing garage will be utilized as an accessory building for the restaurant for storage. The existing dwelling on 8R will remain where it is, and nothing will change there. And so, actually, at this point, now that existing conditions are kind of been laid out, I was going to turn it over to my client, Mr. Godin, so he can sort of just give you a little bit of background on itself, his connection with the island, and also what he sees as his vision for the project. Thank you.
I'm actually going to let my partner, Jeff Christiansen, who's actually my brother-in-law as well, who has a further connection to this island than I do, start and kind of give you a little bit of that history.
So, I'm Jeff Christiansen. I'm a Newbury, Plum Island, born and raised. In my adult life, I became a businessman on Plum Island. Actually appeared in front of this board a couple of years ago for changing, you said, the former Mr. Mo's property. We got the ice cream surf shop put on there. And around the same time, about close to two years ago, we came across these properties. And, you know, we've been very patient with what are we going to do with it. You know, we operate rental properties and all the surrounding homes. And through the cottage, our main business, we really asked for a lot of island feedback about what you guys think should be done there. You know, we listened to the folks, and everyone almost unanimously agrees that a restaurant would be a great use and a great addition to the island. Clean up the corner, it's kind of an ugly building that's there now. And that's, we've been getting support. People like Bob, Dave, Kathy have been very supportive, as well as, you know, hundreds of other island folks that really are kind of sharing our vision. So, that's really who we are and the gist of what we want to be doing.
So, in the narrative that you gave us, you don't plan on running the restaurant?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yep. We plan on being landlord.
Yeah.
Plan on being the landlord and finding a restaurant that would be willing to lease the premises from them.
And Ross will be very pretty about what goes there, you know, and we'll have a say in that, of course.
Yeah, I provide you some information. I don't know if you know what happened to own in that surrounding area. Might be helpful just to kind of give you a sense here. So, we currently, it's not perfect. Since that point, actually, let me see, we don't own this one, actually, but we do this one right here.
Are these four here, two?
We don't own this one, or this one, or this one, but we own this one.
Dobson, Maturos.
Yeah, this is Dobson. Lenny since sold that one. Other Gino's very supportive of it, and Chicky is also very supportive of the project. Yeah, and we own all these around here as well. So, kind of have the surroundings around it. And I'm not sure, my wife is a very big Plum Island history buff, and so she loves to tell me about what used to be what. And I always wondered why, when we looked at this property, it was kind of in odd shape. The island normally is perfectly, you know, rectangular, lots that were carved up. And I guess its history has always been kind of the entry point to the island. This was the original hotel that sat on this property line. The reason it's now two lots is the, Mr. Fenton, I believe, sold half of it to Maturos and then sold the other half at a later point, so he subdivided it temporarily, I guess. In the meantime, and then it was replaced by a 50-room hotel that also had a apparently successful restaurant. And behind it had a barn for dancing and bowling, apparently was popular back then. So, very interesting, that's the history of the property before it became the gas station and the service station. And that is just what it was.
So, the, maybe I didn't mention everything about the two lots, but I just wanted to follow up on what we talked about earlier. And that is, these buildings are actually all on grade, so none of them are on pilings. And there's a significant amount of paved area on each lot. And, you know, part of the proposal that my client's making is to eliminate a significant amount of that paved area. And obviously, the new structure that's proposed is going to be up on pilings and fully floodproof. So, unlike the buildings that exist there right now. So, there's going to be a significant improvement with respect to stormwater management and also with respect to being able to withstand floodwater. And to that end, I think we'll turn it over to the architect to talk a little bit about the actual methods involved in the proposal.
Sure.
Shannon. Good evening, my name is Shannon Outt with the TNS Architects. Thank you for hearing our proposal tonight. Mark covered a little bit of the existing conditions on the project. And over here, so you can see the plan. And as Jeff and Vincent talked a little bit about their connection to the island, one of the things that the team started off with at the very beginning was, what do we put on this particular piece of property? And we've talked a little bit about the restaurant, and I think that does make some sense, not only for the future component of the property and the island, but also the historical component and what was there in the past. So, part of the reason that we're here tonight is to talk a little bit about the use and the concept that the existing service station slash gas station, I think we're actually making it a better use and basically a more conforming use with a restaurant option. In your packet, and I'm going to put this chart here, show you a little bit about the site plan. As Mark started to talk about, we are raising the building up on pilings so that we can conform to the FEMA regulations. So, that's one of the really big, important factors that the team reviewed and approached at the very beginning. Mark also made comment about the existing pavement that's there. It's approximately on Lot 2 here, or 2 Old Point Road. It's approximately 44% covered with pavement right now. With the proposal that we're doing, I'm raising the building up on pilings, taking away the asphalt. We will have some impervious surface area that pertains to access into the building. And then one of the other elements that we thought would be a really good aspect is to create a sidewalk that kind of wraps the corner of the property. And one of the things that we talked about at the very beginning is, as you come over the bridge into, or onto Plum Island, this is one of the first things you see. And so, the thought would be to really give it a little bit of a front porch aspect of the island. We talked about allocating this walkway here so that there's an opportunity for a bus stop in terms of the school bus area. So, some of the pervious and impervious components of the project are based on what we're doing. And so, going from 44% down to about 7 or 8% for the impervious is a great factor, not only for the FEMA regulations and the environmental regulations, but also for the look and feel of the property. As we talked a little bit about, Mark mentioned earlier, we have the barn, existing barn component, and then the new restaurant. The new restaurant basically meets all the criteria for the planning and the zoning ordinance. Really, we're here for the use. And so, in terms of the floor area ratio, as well as the lot coverage, we're basically below the thresholds that the town has. The height limits were below as well. And what we're trying to do is create something that obviously has a good impact for the island, for the neighbors. And as Jeff and Vincent have mentioned, we spent a lot of time talking to the neighbors. We've got some really good support in terms of the project. And then, the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is, we spent a lot of time on the architecture and deciding, obviously, what the building would look like. The biggest and the first challenge is this building is raised up five or six feet comparative to the existing conditions. We obviously have it on stilts, so that connection of how we do that was one of the architectural features that we think actually makes the building pretty interesting and exciting. It does have a little bit more contemporary shapes in terms of rectangles, some kind of angled roofs. But we would like to use, excuse me, cedar shingles, the kind of the island vernacular in terms of the materials. That will help, obviously, with maintenance, but also give it kind of a nod to the history, but also to the future that the island could potentially have. And then the last page we have in the package just gives a little bit of idea about the revenues. You know, we're still in the very beginning phases, but the idea is to give it the kind of the seaside look with the shingles. We do obviously have some angles to it. And part of the connection to the ground was pretty important, so we have that ADA access to the building. Be happy to answer any of the questions that you may have, or I can turn it back over to Mark.
Right now, for you? Well, you, but Mark, we're all done, or you want to?
Sure.
Okay, we're just, go ahead, Mark.
Finish up? Well, I just thought I'd sort of wrap up by getting into a little bit of the criteria for, you know, what we're here for. We have two applications for findings, and both of these applications have to do with changing a nonconforming use. And so, we're in the section of the PIOD, which governs changes of nonconforming uses where the new use is not substantially more detrimental than, in other words, it's less detrimental than the existing use and not substantially more detrimental for the neighborhood or the PIOD. So, that's the criteria, called that out in the memorandum that I submitted along with the application. And it's actually section 4D of 97-4D. So, since there are two finding applications, I'll just take each in turn. First of all, the proposed restaurant, we would submit that that is a less detrimental use than what existed there previously, or what exists actually previously. So, and that is the auto service station, the auto repair business, and used car business. Those uses are not really conducive to the island life and the way the island has grown over the years. The noise and potential environmental contamination that can stem from that kind of use, I would say that that's a detrimental use in and of itself. And in fact, when there was a gas station component to it, they had underground gas tanks which actually did leak and required environmental cleanup. Luckily, that's in the past, but someone could come back and continue that use, and maybe not underground gas tanks, but certainly vehicular fluids and the kind of noise and environmental damage that goes along with that kind of business. I would also submit that the existing building, 2 Old Point Road, is not necessarily aesthetically pleasing, nor is the residential structure that's on the lot with it. And that, in fact, what is being proposed by Mr. Alter and Mr. Godin actually is more conducive to what, how the island has grown and does present an aesthetically pleasing elevation and profile. And then number three, as we mentioned before, those buildings at 2 Old Point Road are both on grade. And so, you know, this building is going to be built to flood standards, which is a significant part of the criteria. Part of the criteria has to do with whether you're going to be more detrimental to the PIOD. And the purpose, the overarching purpose of the PIOD is to protect the citizens from flood damage and also to save money on flood cleanup. In addition, the restaurant, as Shannon mentioned, you know, although this is a reasonably good-sized building that we're planning on, that we're proposing, it actually doesn't go over any of the dimensional requirements. And so, we comply with the FAR, we comply with the lot coverage, we comply with the setbacks, and we have more frontage than is necessary. So, the lot with the new structure on it at 2 Old Point is actually more conforming to the zoning bylaw under the proposal than it exists now. Because as it exists now, there's at least the encroaching setback by the residential structure, which would be cured by its removal. With respect to 8R Old Point, very similar argument there. The auto repair school is another, I would say, not environmentally friendly use. It's, can be noisy, and it could also cause contamination. And so, you know, be a relatively benign change in use for storage for the restaurant, which we wouldn't anticipate any sort of noise or environmental issue there. The parking aspect of it will actually look on the ground very similar to the way 2 Old Point looks, because it's going to be right near the lot line. It's in the plan in your packet. So, we would submit that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, nor is it substantially more detrimental to the PIOD than what exists. And in addition, and finally, we think that what weighs in on what is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood or not is often well determined by people in the neighborhood or people on the island. And so, we think we have some significant support. Some people, I believe, have shown up here tonight in person to support the project, but also quite a few people have submitted written, you know, letters of support with respect to the project. And with that, I have nothing further unless you have questions.
I just had one quick, so there's a little over 200 signatures on there. And like Jeff had said, you know, getting the support of the community was really important to us. When we initially had some drafts of what you're seeing today, we thought it was important to get the feedback of the community. So, we actually held a little town hall meeting at Pitta Hall and invited over 2,000 people through your social media, Pitta's letter, email lists, and got well over 100 people that showed up and gave us feedback, most of which who actually signed that letter. And, you know, we really wanted to make it something that the community was a part of.
Do you have the abutters list? I didn't get one with the finding, Mark. I mean, I have your mailing, but I just want to make sure that you've notified everybody according to the certified abutters list.
Sure, I can email or drop by.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, or you can email it.
And on the abutters list, there's only, there's three people that I think are on the abutters list that didn't sign a letter, two of which we just weren't able to get a hold of, unfortunately. The other was the restaurant on the other corner, who is not opposed to and will not oppose what we're doing, but I wasn't going to necessarily ask him to give support, as you can understand.
If you want to get questions?
Sure.
Okay, would anybody like to speak in favor of the project?
Move this out of the way.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Buck Conners, 39 Annapolis Way, longtime property owner at Plum Island and resident. And I want to just thank the Christiansen family and Vincent for what they've been doing in the island, excuse me. When you come onto the island, obviously, Plum Island termite is the major thoroughfare on the island and kind of a commercial corridor. And the, as much as I enjoyed having my car serviced at Andy's or at Angie's, it certainly, their new location on Route 1 is probably more appropriate at this time. So, to have an opportunity to add to a little bit of a commercial base, which isn't going to tax our school system and become self-contained, it just seems like a good course of action. One of the most remarkable parts of this is, it's probably the only project on Plum Island that has full parking for what they want to do. And whether that's residential or any other project, you certainly have experienced, we'll make the cars fit and then the overflow and what have you. But certainly, my wife Kathy and I fully support the endeavor. And I think this is a first step in a multi-step approval process. And I have full confidence in this team that they're just going to do a great job. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Dave Williamson, 1 Southern Millard, another long-term residence. And I just want to second points that Bob made and applaud the family for how they approached the neighborhood and had that meeting and showed everyone what the plans were, asked for feedback. And I certainly support the whole project and hope you guys do too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to add one thing, since you brought up the parking. Now, on the site, we have two over the code requirement, but on where we have the store, the Cottage Island Market, we're currently about 30 cars over code. Currently, we use it, it's for beach parking and whatnot. So, that is also available for overflow parking, especially after about 3 o'clock. You don't need it for the beach anymore. So, we're actually about one and a half, a little over one and a half code requirement on parking, which is a...
I'm not making a comment yes or no, but when we approved the parking for the cottage, it was designated parking for beach parking, and it was designated parking for the cottage.
Correct.
So, you want to make sure you're not mixing, crossing...
Well, it's commercial parking, like, I understand.
I'm just bringing that up for...
No, no, obviously, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Anybody opposed? Or just questions in general?
Mark? There are a couple of questions for you. What's the intended use of the garage building?
Storage for the restaurant?
It's a two-story structure, and there's no renovations or additions or changes to it?
Not at this time, no.
Does it have any restroom facilities in it?
I don't believe so.
Yes, it has a full bathroom and shower. It has its own vetment as well.
Okay.
And the residence in the back, it's half on the Lot 150, 155?
You mean Lot 8R?
Yeah.
The one that's over the line?
Oh, yeah.
It's over the line, but it's on another piece of property that's owned by Mr. Godin.
So, in terms of the number of lots in succession that are all stacked up together, what is the lot for this project?
It's a combination of the two.
So, the two lots become one lot?
2 Old Point and 8R, yeah. They're not owned in common, but they're owned by the same principal.
They were bought in two different times, because Gary Maturos needed time to find a new location for the garage. So, when we bought all the homes, which included the barn, we let him lease back for free the barn component, because he was still, he uses that for his business. And then, when he sold the other component, it just was in a different LLC, but same ownership percentage, just same ownership.
This is why we did two separate finding applications, so we could make sure that both lots got the approvals that they needed.
But it should be one lot, right? What's your thinking?
It's not common ownership.
It's not common, it's not common in ownership. And so, the question, when you look at the site plan, you're pushing parking back onto the second lot. And so, now you've got two lots, two separate owners, one use, parking for one use on the other lot. How do you explain that?
It could be due to the other LLC in a week. I mean, it's really a formality right now, which is...
So, that's a question. You have two lots, you have one use that you're going for. You have technically adjoining lots or technically the combined lots. You have parking that's overflowing, so those are questions. You have the existing dwelling that's on that second lot, but is also on third lot. You have the existing dwelling that's on that second lot, but is also on third lot. It would be helpful if the site plan had the surrounding context, understanding that you own it, but the whole idea of being an improvement to the neighborhood, it would be good to see the adjoining buildings on a site plan and how the new building aligns with those. I think the question, how are we for use in terms of that existing dwelling? If you're going to rent that out to a separate third party, now you have a restaurant, two different lots, you have one big lot, you have someone else, a separate use on, it's already there, but it's separate use, now you have a new use. If you combine the two lots and you have one use on that lot, now you have a second use. How does that all get sorted out? And then, on the site plan, there's also the right-of-way for the sewer, which tees right through eight R, which is a question of what is that easement? And what happens with that, understanding that you're putting parking on it and it's kind of sort of a dirt road use, but it also says sewer easement on the site survey plan. So, I'd like some understanding of exactly what rights or deeded rights written go with that.
And that's the one that cuts from McLeod to Old Point?
Yeah. Well, it's cut from McLeod to Old Point, it cuts right back through.
Yeah.
It's fairly big. We just need more definition on what it is and what...
My understanding was it was an internal road that was built by the Maturos family to connect their cottages with each other that is privately owned, that we maintain. It's not maintained by the town.
The, we went to the site plan, there's a note right here that just says sewer easement, points to the dash line, so I'm just asking what that means.
There's a hydrant in McLeod maybe for access up there.
How many betterments do you have? Do you know?
On those two properties, there'd be four total. There's one for the Angie service station, the adjacent house that the Maturos family was using as their office house, one for the barn, and then one for eight R. So...
It's not really our purview, but in terms of the number of tables to get to parking, you have, you've shown the decks, you've shown the seating, the parking, I mean, the parking lot counts to the numbers that they show. Although, your site plan with the walkway does cut through two of your parking spaces, so you have, we need 55, so you have 57. The little landscape plan cuts out two spaces, which means the deck 55. The tables count out per shown, but you have a lot of space on the deck, and so when we count out the deck space and you have X square feet divided by 15 square feet per tables and chairs, you get a lot more people than you're contending for the size of the spaces that you're showing. If you're going to have standing room, people who have functions on that deck. Understanding it all fits, understanding what you've presented in terms of lot coverage and size, but there's a lot of empty deck space which could be used A for more tables or two. And I think if you're going to show space and tables, you either show a plan and show it's fully loaded, so we understand, building inspector would like to see what the maximum occupancy would be. And you'd hate to have them count it up and just go with the tables that you have and put a limit on that and not have any standing room or additional room. So, that then goes back to parking and obviously with the number, with the site sizes that you have, a little different parking configuration could certainly give you more parking.
Make a comment to that. One of the things that we looked at in terms of the capacity, seating capacity, as well as in terms of specific tables and chairs in the building, typically in a business like this where it's seasonal in terms of has opportunities for outside space as well as inside space, we would calculate the square footage or the occupant load based on the seating tables and then not necessarily have to count it twice for the outside deck. So, typically, that's how we would approach projects like this. The two parking spaces that kind of have that on the landscape plan, and this is our start of our diagram, those would be usable, meaning that someone could park there if we wanted to. We were trying to create a little bit nicer landscape area between the two lots, so those are meant to be parked on if they needed to. But if they do need to be designated as a walkway, we could do that too on a specific day if it needed it.
There's no legend between what is gray and brown and...
That's right.
You know, assumed to be gray or whatever that brown, other brown color is. So, that's just a comment. And do you have any restaurant operators? I mean, if we, this goes forward and you go through and someone looks at this and they decide that the restaurant needs the kitchen and the scullery and the service needs to be a little bit different?
We've consulted with some operators in coming up with this plan as well. Obviously, TMS has extensive experience in restaurants. You know, the, kind of the chicken or the egg situation here, where to get an operator to be on board, they want to know that it's an approved use and that they can move forward with it. So, we've kind of held back on really having a lot of those detailed conversations until we knew we actually had something that is buildable. So, that's kind of where we're at at the moment. But we have gotten feedback from a number of operators to at least get to where we're at now, so that we have a shell of something that shouldn't change.
And my question just stems from previous applications for these types of non-dwelling uses that always seem to be something and then be something else, and they tend to move a little bit. So, just asking to understand.
It's why it's taken us a year and a half to kind of get to this point now. It's really been a, quite a research project for us to get where we are, where we are now.
Does the survey include the right-of-way? Because I know across the street, what's paved and where the right-of-way and where the property line is greatly different than what's perceived in terms of use and...
Sure, you mean the...
Right-of-way for the street?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. Well, there are, there's poles that kind of run along the line, at least on McLeod, I'm sorry, on Plum Island Boulevard. So, obviously, the street's on the other side of that, so it's not really creeping in. You can see there's a pole halfway between McLeod and Old Point on Plum Island Boulevard. On Old Point, it's kind of gray, or exactly where the line is there. It's all pavement from the marsh all the way to the Hauptholmes.
It looks pretty consistent with the assessors map.
Yeah, no, I think the, I think the site plan does show the right-of-way. They're all labeled.
Yeah, and that site plan was done in August of 18, it was back here.
And then, there is, from the sites in the survey, I'm understanding you have a survey that looks like it's here, and the survey is more detailed, and the engineer that provided the survey, you stand behind it, the assessors' map still show something slightly different in terms of lot lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's supposed to get corrected. It's interesting when you, when you actually look at the size of the frontage on them, the, there's a little bit of issues there with the adjacent ten old points having a lot of its property on ours, and then Chickie's house next to it being leading on to ten old point. And it's a discussion we've had with the town on how to solve that. But if you actually look at the size of the properties and the dimensions on the maps, they're different than the way it's drawn. So, the actual dimension sizes are correct, but they're not accurate to what the picture shows.
Looking at that, looking at this, trying to put two and two together and the...
That was a little surprise after we had purchased it.
Has Concom seen this? Has the building inspector seen this at all?
Yeah, we actually had like a technical review meeting with the planner, with the building inspector, and with the conservation agent, and sort of went over all the aspects of the project and what the questions and concerns were. And, you know, sort of to one of your points, one of the things we discussed at that meeting was one of the questions that you brought up right in the beginning, which was having each lot in separate ownership. And, you know, our discussion revolved around, you know, well, how can you do that? And we came to the conclusion that, you know, doing two separate findings, one for each lot, was the way to handle it, that there was no need under zoning for the entire locus to be owned in one entity, because this use right here, the restaurant, didn't require the square footage of this. It did require some parking, but we can provide that parking either by way of a lease or an agreement, certainly, but it doesn't have to be all owned. Also, if you go ahead and combine these all into one entity, you run the risk of creating a non-conformity that you can't cure with respect to this house, which right now is pre-existing non-conforming. But if you change the ownership of the lot, then maybe we eliminate that and we've caused another problem that we're giving it to. Also, another point, sorry, new report water also gives a verbal okay for up to 200 cc's, and the load would not be a problem.
I didn't check the building for size where it is, you know, it's all grounded here.
All I was going to say is that if, you know, we may be tight on the parking and you're talking about possible use in the parking across the street, maybe when you come back, you can have a definite plan of how you want to do that.
You mean some sort of a...
Instead of saying we'll have parking.
No, no, obviously, but I mean, we obviously wanted to onsite fit what we could there, but...
Right, right, but, you know, to Eric's point, if, you know, you look at more seating or whatever on the deck as possible, you know, you can look at it different ways. I'm just saying that you should have maybe a backup plan?
For the extra parking?
For the extra parking.
Seems that's the issue to rest and to bring back before us, and if they were both lots under the same ownership, it would be less issues of concern. If you are leasing parking and someone goes to sell that second lot, that parking then goes away, and if that goes away, then your restaurant is now non-conforming with parking and you can't allow that to happen.
You mean between these two lots here?
Well, no, that's true. We'd be in violation of the permit.
We would have some sort of a deed restriction.
Where are we setting up?
No, we don't want to do that.
No, we don't want to do that.
I mean, that can be solved with a deed, you know, restriction on there and certain things that...
Right, and I'm just talking about, but we're not setting up to create a finding that then has...
Of course, no, no, it was, it's always been the anticipation that these two will be combined when I go for a construction loan on the property. It just hasn't, didn't need it at the moment. But it definitely, if that was a condition of any approvals, be quickly solved.
Did you have an occupancy discussion with Sam at all, or...
About how many seats for the restaurant?
Yeah.
Yes, and that was what, how we wound up computing the parking requirements.
What did he give you for a number, do you remember?
So, we came up with approximately 158 seats. And...
And that's including the decks?
Yes. We said 57 parking spaces, and we found that the requirement would have been 55, so we had two extra.
And does that leave spaces for the single-family home that you're examining?
Yes. Yeah, it doesn't, right, it doesn't take away from the house.
They have a little driveway in the front that would still be, still be there.
Keeping in mind that we don't necessarily know how many seats the restaurant owner will want to operate, so we probably, you know, guessed on the side of more rather than less. And so, we would guess that it would be less rather than more if that happens, but you never know, you have to be prepared.
Yeah, for cooking, cook a lot of plates out of a small kitchen or...
That's right.
...cook cans or whatever.
For one, you know, if you have a plan that's approved with X amount of parking, you only can have so many seats then anyhow.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I think the sewer easement, number C, relates to parking and then the ownership of the two properties and the ownership, and then this dwelling that then sits on one lot with three structures. If this is accessory to that, this isn't necessarily accessory to that. Those are the kind of questions for clarification.
Before I leave with an incomplete knowledge of what you're asking, I just want to follow up on that if you don't mind. So, your question is about the...
Yes.
And specifically, what did you want me to find out for you?
Well, if it's one lot or becomes one lot, for the sake of...
Oh, what we talked about with respect to the non-conforming protection?
Yes.
Okay.
And if it's two lots, then it's, you know, it is what it is, is sitting half on the neighbor's adjacent lot or the other lot which you own. You could combine that lot with this lot to solve that residence, then you have two residents on one lot, that doesn't work. So, in terms of betterment, less detrimental, less non-conforming, preventing exacerbation of existing problems, all words right out of the bylaws, to make your argument, it just, that seems to be the one fuzzy piece of this whole.
I would agree with you. I would also suggest that if in fact that becomes the sticky wicket, that we could probably provide a long-term lease between number two and eight R that's recordable, like a 100-year lease or something like that, for parking and for the use of that lot, even though they're in separate ownership.
We just don't want to be...
Well, that gives you the contractual, you know, right between the ties of two lots together.
If in our finding that we're giving you assumed benefits, rights, definition of property uses that we're really not giving you, that's, you know, we've been through this before, we don't want to do that. So, that's the big question.
Okay.
So, do we continue until the 31st of January? That's our next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Can you sign for them or do you want to send them?
Just a reminder that this meeting, continued hearing on January 31st will be held in the fire hall at Reed Morgan Ave, so don't come here. There'll be a different meeting here.
You had a running up of the two-year non-continuous use issue.
Yeah, we were worried about that.
Holding the hearing now and presenting that, or does the finding have to be made? Or does, just now that you've made the application and then you've opened it, are you, is there a time issue here?
There is a time issue, but...
I think we help facilitate that by having this meeting.
Yeah, and if I didn't express it earlier, I want to thank you for making the effort to hold this sort of special meeting. Very helpful, and yes, we are up against it when it comes to the time, but as long as we can proceed in January, we should be okay.
Just make us aware of the time.
So, do you have a deadline or...
We do, it's mid-March.
Mid-March, okay. Do what we can.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we need to close, make motion if we close the meeting.
Second.
All the way there.